Councilor, we know that you get on our lead with the prayer at this time. I ask you to stand if you're able and ask council member.
Thank you, Lord, for the grace that you have extended towards us, helped us to flow in that and appreciate it, and extend it to others. We ask for your wisdom as we deliberate issues of important matters that make a difference in the lives of our citizens. Thank you for a spirit of collaboration and cooperation, and we bless your name, and thank you for all good things in your name. Amen.
Assistant City Clerk, Cal Bro.
Assistant Mayor.
Here.
Blackwell.
Here.
Warner.
Here.
Watson.
Here.
Rogers.
Here.
Fuller.
Here.
And Miller.
Here.
You came in today, there was an agenda as you came in. We didn't have enough. Hopefully you'll share with your neighbor. We did go by the agenda item, and we're on item number four now. That is consideration of minutes following regular scheduled city council meeting. And this was for meetings that were held on June 10th, 24th, July 8th, and 22nd. And I would recommend approving the minutes. There's no objections or corrections. You will accept the minutes that submitted. Item number five is consideration of minutes and recommendations for a special call to meet the whole meeting, which was held on June 24th and August 8th, and a regular committee of the whole meeting held on June, July 8th. The 24th was a closed session for client attorney privilege. B was a economic impact analysis. C was downtown development project performance. D was next steps by Amy State and recommended parking concept for, concept two for approval. And E was a closed personnel session. July the 8th was awards and commissions committee. It was removed from the agenda. We didn't have enough time. D was non-residential maintenance code and internal demolition process update. We've got some other information on that again today. C was a recommendation for public service awards. Natasha Hampton was funding allocation recommended for approval by United Community Ministries, Rockin' Down Edco, CDC Housing Counseling, Boys and Girls Club, and the Tar River, the Tar River Region, and the Buck Leonard Associates. Item D was classification and compensation contract amendment. Again, I think most of you know that we're going through the process right now, which we are, we looking at our classification and compensation for employees. That was done by Elaine Henderson, our human relations director, recommended for approval of the contract and amendment of the calendar benefit services. August 8th was the downtown development project update by Mary Russer. Closed session was item D. And C was a website upgrade by Pam Casey, recommended actions to approve the minutes and recommendations.
Mayor, for a point of clarification, so are we approving the minutes?
Yes.
Or are we approving the recommendations out of those meetings? Because I remember voting against a couple of those items.
Oh.
So I would have to vote against then a couple of items listed here.
Okay.
Likewise.
All right. Then we will go through the close, uh, June 24th, we had a closed session, economic impact analysis, downtown development project performance. I don't think we took any action at that point in time.
No.
On July the 8th was awards and commission, non-residential maintenance code and recommendation for public service awards. I don't think anything had to be approved or action taken later. D was a classification compensation contract. We did, I think we approved that. And then on August the 8th was the downtown development project adopting the resolution. So that may be the item that you two are talking about. So could you make a motion subject to that?
Make a motion to approve these minutes, but I would have to exclude item D, which I voted against, and also item A under August 8th.
All right.
Against both of those.
So who are we voting for? What? Maybe we need to vote for the minutes.
Let's vote for the minutes first.
Yeah.
All in favor? So who makes the motion?
So just as a clarification, D.
I'm already on it.
That vote happened in this room.
All right.
So it was, it was not an actual vote.
So the vote was already taken on these issues?
The vote happened when we came here.
Right.
That's where the vote happened.
So there's no need to re-vote?
Is that you voted against that.
Well.
In this room. So just for information of that, so in committee of the whole, there wasn't a vote.
Okay, well, which, which item?
Item D.
Item D, okay.
So, otherwise, there was no vote on that. What's the other one?
Um, item A.
Item A, August 8th.
So item A was a vote, and it is noted in those minutes that you, you voted against. Well, I might want to, yes, ma'am. Thank you.
So we need a motion to approve these minutes.
All in favor of that?
Aye.
All right. All right, we're gonna move on to item number six then, community update. Call our city manager Rochelle Smallton.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of council. I will try to keep this as brief as I can. However, there are some significant updates that I would like to provide to council and to the public. First of all, speaking on the sanitation worker's strike of 1978, the public is invited to view a 53-minute documentary produced by the City of Rocky Mount Communications and Marketing Office, focused on the sanitation workers' strike of 1978. I have previewed this documentary, and I will tell you, it is a very exceptional job done by our community and marketing staff. The documentary viewing will take place Saturday, September 7th at 2:30 PM in the Booker T. Washington Community Center. The documentary will follow the North Carolina Highway Historical Marker unveiling ceremony sponsored by the Phoenix Historical Society, taking place at 1 o'clock PM, also at the BTW Community Center. Sanitation worker's strike of 1978 began when a City of Rocky Mount employee, Alexander Preacher Evans, picked up a suit of clothes left by a trash can at a residence in the Emawood neighborhood. Workers had been instructed by management that any items left within a five-foot vicinity of trash cans could be picked up by them. Evans was known for his ministry, which included donating clothes like a suit and other items to the need. After receiving complaints from the residents that a suit was stolen, Evans did not steal the items and returned the clothing to his supervisor the following day. However, Evans was suspended from his job for two days and charged with misdemeanor larceny. What followed was the sanitation workers' strike of 1978. I would also add that the strike is credited for spurning a voter rights lawsuit that resulted in a racially balanced ward system that allowed for African-Americans to be elected to the city council. On October the 8th, 2018, the City of Rocky Mount issued an apology to the Evans family. Its supporters and to the sanitation workers employed during the 1978 strike, and a resolution was presented in their honor, recognizing the 40th anniversary of the strike. This year, we will have a historical marking, marker unveiling. I would like to recognize all of the members of the Phoenix Historical Society that started bringing to the city's attention that this was a historical event. The city is excited about the marker unveiling. I would also like to thank the Phoenix Historical Society for providing our communications and marketing office with numerous articles and interview leads for this documentary. If there are any members of the Phoenix Historical Society here today, please stand and please, everyone, give them a huge round of applause as I call their names out. We have Mr. Evans, coworkers English and Rudolph Edmondson, Willie Moody, and Leonard Giles, Reverend Thomas L. Walker, Reverend Lloyd Morris, and Jean Prior, the daughter of Naomi Green, Judge Clinton Sumner, and former human relations director Samuel Gray, Richard Peddaway from the Rocky Mount City Workers Association, Solidin Mohammed of Black Workers for Justice, Jim Marin of the Phoenix Historical Society, also provided a historical component. And finally, Mrs. Marjorie Evans, the widow of Alexander Evans, and all of the families of Mr. Alexander Evans. Please recognize the wonderful contributions that these individuals made to our city. And now for just a very quick preview of the documentary. Move on, for the sake of time here, we'll come back to that. The second update is a MWBE meet and greet, which will be held next Friday, September 6th, from 2:00 to 5:00 at the Imperial Center. This is an opportunity for any minority women, business enterprise owners to meet, to meet our staff. And also, I would like to take this opportunity to introduce a new hire to our finance team. It's Candace Kurtz is here. This is our new purchasing manager. Candace works under the direction of the Director of Finance, Amy State, and we want to welcome you. And this is the first of many projects, I think, that Candace will lead. So please be mindful of that opportunity next Friday, September 6th, from 2:00 to 5:00 at the Imperial Center. And then finally, would like to bring to the public's attention an interactive ward map that is now available on the city's website. If you look under the tab for government, and then pull down mayor and council, and then under that, you will see a ward map, which is very, very, very useful. It helps people to understand what ward they actually live in, and it also gives you information about your ward representative on city council. So I won't ask them to pull that down at the moment, but certainly it is very helpful to, I knew it was very helpful, would have been very helpful to me as a newcomer to the city to understand which ward I actually lived in. So we're ready, okay? Back to the documentary.
He always talked to us about the law. So we young guys, we don't hear, but he always gave a, he carried himself in a very way that we all have respect for him. And I spoke to the lead investigator for the city police department, and they all were just adamant that they were not going to dismiss us now. And when that money came and the charge had not been dropped, the next day, the workers led by Larry Giles said, "We're going to strike." Because the incident should never have happened.
Again, it is a very high-quality production. Excuse me, and want to acknowledge Tamika Keenan Norman and her favorite finance staff for an awesome, awesome job. The next item is a presentation by our Water Resources Director, Brenton Vint, and this is in response to questions that have been raised about the quality of our water supply. Brenton.
Honorable mayor and members of the city council, managers Smalltoni, staff members, and citizens of Rocky Mount, good afternoon. I am very proud to serve the city as your Water Resources Director. At the request of council, I am here to provide to you an update on the quality of our water and the effort we are making towards preserving our water infrastructure. I would like to begin my presentation first by reciting the mission of our city, because it clearly defines what we do as an organization for our customers. The city's mission is to advance community well-being, safety, and quality of life by delivering exceptional municipal services. The mission of the Water Resources Department supports this larger mission and seeks to produce and deliver the highest quality water in an environmentally responsible manner to preserve the public's health and safety. These are not just fancy words on a board. We live by these ideals. It is important to note that of the many essential services and exceptional services that all the departments across the city provides, Water Resources is the only department that produces a product that goes inside your body every day. Water is life. It is for this reason that we operate our water treatment facilities in such a manner that quality is always a top priority. For us, it is more than just meeting regulatory standards. It is about delivering the best quality product. We're very fortunate in Rocky Mount to have one of the best water sources in the region, the Tar River. This is a picture of our beautiful Tar River reservoir, which impounds approximately 1,650 acres and 3 billion gallons of water. This is one of our major water infrastructure. The water treatment process is both a physical and a chemical process. In its simplest form, raw water is pumped from the river to the plant, where chemicals are added to bond the solids together. The water then moves to a larger holding tank, where the solids will settle to the bottom, sedimentation. The much cleaner water is then filtered through a filter bed of sand and other media to further remove impurities. The final stage is a disinfection process, which kills or deactivates pathogens using chlorine. Pathogens are disease-causing microorganisms. The finished water is also treated with fluoride to support dental health before being pumped to our ostas. We operate our water system to guarantee the highest quality product, and I am proud to report several recognitions and significant milestones that we have accomplished over the years. First place for best taste in drinking water in the state of North Carolina, 2004 and 2010. Second place, 2009 and 2011. Third place, 2005. And even though we may have not had a recent placement, we strongly believe the taste buds of those judges may to be examined. The city continues, however, to submit water samples every year because of our confidence in the quality of our water. Very importantly, the city has not issued a boil water notice in over 12 years. Now, don't knock on wood, because this is not by luck or chance. This is because of a committed and dedicated team of employees who strive every day to ensure our water quality. The city was allowed by the EPA to reduce lead monitoring to every three years, and I will speak more to that in an upcoming slide. But more, very importantly, the water treatment plants pass all state mandated annual inspections, and as you know, we issue a public annual drinking water quality report to inform our customers on test results. Now, the intent of this slide, water regulations, is certainly not to give you a lesson in chemistry or biology, but it is just to emphasize that the federal and state regulatory standards under which our water system operates are very, very stringent. We are required to test for and report on a routine basis all these potentially harmful chemical and biological products to protect the health of the public. Apart from the hourly and daily process control testing that is conducted, we are required to test monthly, quarterly, yearly, and every three to nine years for these additional parameters. I highlighted lead, because this has become an era of concern for many of our customers, given the 2015 incident in Flint, Michigan, and the recent comparison to our water system. All of us in the water industry regretted what happened in Flint, and we feel the pain of all those who were impacted. However, I can assure you that the likelihood of that incident happening in Rocky Mount is extremely low. Remember, we talked about water source earlier? Flint's water source was the Flint River, which is known to contain very hard water. Hard water is caused by a significant amount of dissolved minerals like calcium or magnesium. On the contrary, our Tar River has a lower mineral content. Because of the hardness of the water in the Flint River, a chemical was used to treat, in their treatment process, which caused leaching of lead from pipes in their distribution system. Rocky Mount, on the other hand, uses a much milder chemical, and fortunately, we have no lead pipes in our distribution system of which we are aware. So the unfortunate incident in Flint was not related to failing or crumbling infrastructure as you may have been led to believe. Flint's issue was a direct result of your water treatment process. It should be noted that once they returned to purchasing water from the city of Detroit and using the same infrastructure, the problem was resolved. So let's talk a little bit about lead and lead monitoring. Lead typically gets into treated water through pipes that convey water to the customer. Plumbing inside older homes, those built prior to 1986, can also be a source of lead. Now, around 1986, the Environmental Protection Agency set regulations that minimized the use of materials that contribute to the possibility of lead getting into the water supply. So Rocky Mount has been testing lead for the past 25 years under EPA regulations. And in 1996, EPA allowed the city to reduce sampling frequency to every three years and 30 samples because of favorable results that we have gotten. So the last testing cycle that the city participated in was in 2017, and all results were less than three parts per billion, which is well below the limit of 15 parts per billion. We will now turn our attention to the major assets of our water system. And as you can see, we are fortunate in Rocky Mount to have two water treatment plants, the Sunset Avenue Plant and the Tar River Reservoir Plan, with a combined treatment capacity of 26 million gallons per day. Our daily demand is 9 million gallons per day, so we are well-prepared for future growth. We can easily switch between plants in the unlikely event of a complete failure at either plant. It is great to have this flexibility. I am pleased to report the progress we have made over the past three years towards upgrading or preserving our water infrastructures. Thanks to the support of council, we were able to completely rehabilitate the filter system at the Tar River Plant in 2016 at a cost of $954,000. This was a very essential project to support plant efficiency and water quality. We are currently replacing a 1990 model high-duty pump at the Sunset Avenue Plant at a cost of $750,000. The pump has served for 29 years, and even with routine maintenance, has started to lose its pumping efficiency. This pump is critically important, because failure could result in loss of water to our customers. In total, council has approved over $3.5 million for water infrastructures in just the past three years. The projects listed on this slide were carefully budgeted and prioritized for the next five years with identified funding sources. These are projects that we consider more urgent and important towards maintaining water quality and our water infrastructures. We will continue to replace all the two-inch water mains and maintain our elevated water tanks. As you drive around the city, please take note of the nicely painted water tanks. This is one of the more visible projects, but we are also doing less feasible projects, such as raw water screen replacement. Council recently voted to approve these projects in the FY 2024 capital improvement plan, so these needs are met in the amount of almost $9.5 million. Now, if council will indulge me for a minute, I would like to just take this opportunity to briefly explain the term unmet needs, which may also be creating some confusion. Unmet need is a budgetary item, is a budgetary term used to describe projects that we have identified as important but not urgent, and to which no funding has yet been allocated. Projects that are identified as unmet needs has no, little to no impact on current operations in terms of water quality or infrastructure. These are projects that we intend to address as needed. The Jacobs Report identified a total of $62.3 million as unmet needs over a five-year period allocated between wastewater, water, and stormwater. We believe this number was overly inflated. For example, $32.9 million was estimated for wastewater, but included in that total was $10.5 million for a 27-inch sewer line rehabilitation. Once engineering study was completed, this estimate was reduced to about $5 to $6 million. In fact, council has already approved $2 million from sewer fund to address the first phase of this project, which is currently being advertised and should be completed this budget year. So this project is no longer considered an unmet need. Our internal assessment identified specific projects in each utility at an estimated cost of $5.468 million over the next five years as unmet needs. Please remember, all cities have unmet needs. This is not unique to Rocky Mount, and our water infrastructures are by no means failing or crumbling around us. It is also important to note, and I am sure our budget manager and finance director will attest to the fact that our water and sewer fund will allow us to financially respond to any unforeseen emergencies, but in the interim, we are proactively addressing areas of concern. Before we close, I would like to quickly introduce our water treatment superintendent, Mr. Jim Conley. Jim, would you please stand? Our water and sewer superintendent, Mr. Nate Williams, and Amanda James, who was recently promoted to the position of Water Quality Services Superintendent. These are the, these are the folks who are leading their teams behind the scene to maintain our water quality and infrastructure, and they are doing an outstanding job. Thank you, guys. I'd like to close this presentation with the words of John Maxwell. The pessimist will complain about the wind. The optimist expects it to change. The leader will adjust the sails. To our citizens and water customers, our city leadership team is adjusting the sails every day to ensure that your water quality and water infrastructures are highly maintained and sustainable for generations to come. So go forward. So go forth and enjoy our city water with pride and confidence. Thank you.
Thank you, Brandon. We're going to move on to item number seven now. We've got a number of presentations to make here. First one is A, and we'll tape them in here. We have a retirement resolution recognizing and honoring Dr. Bill Carver for his service to Nash Community Colleges and Rocky Mount community. I do need a motion to approve that resolution. So, Lou.
Sir.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I would oppose. We also want to do a presentation of our executive fire officer certificate to interim division chief Mike Root, and then a presentation by Angelo Ramsay, Edna Insurance Company to the city for the HERO program. At this time, though, I just want to recognize Dr. Carver. He's a friend of mine and has done a great job at Nash Community College over the years. Says, "Whereas William 'Bill' Carver began his work at Nash Community College in September of 1987 as a Small Business Center Director, later taking on the roles of Director of Business and Industry Services and Dean of Continuing Education, and then named Vice President for Instruction in 1999. In 2005, Dr. Carver became Nash County, Nash Community College's fourth president, and under his leadership, the college experienced sustained enrollment, growth, and expanded its footprint, modernizing instructional spaces and delivery. Whereas President Carver's key accomplishments include fundamental education redesign in math, reading, and English, the opening of four new buildings to meet the growing needs of the community, support in earning Nash Community College's national ranking for its digital campus and strong partnerships with business and industry, public schools and other community colleges, four-year institutions and local community agencies. And through his innovative thinking, vision, and strategic oversight, he created a welcoming environment promoting successful learning and student achievement. And whereas in a town in decreasing enrollment was the trend in community colleges, Nash Community College has been ranked eighth among North Carolina community colleges to experience significant growth in enrollment. Dr. Carver is one of the longest-tenured presidents in North Carolina community college system, and his long-range planning has resulted in continued growth and recognition for the college. Under his leadership, Nash Community College was an early adopter of the now-proven early college-high school concept where students simultaneously earn high school and college credentials. Dr. Carver began the electric line construction program more than 20 years ago and other programs that have been launched under his leadership, including the veterinary medical technology, a pharmaceutical clean room, and associates in engineering degree. At this time, I'd like Dr. Carver to come up and present him with this resolution." We want to wish him well. I forgot to say that on his retirement. I think he announced his retirement and convinced him to stay on a longer one, through October, maybe?
Through the month of October.
Yes, sir. Again, congratulations, Bill, and good luck in your retirement. Mayor, as you well know, there's not just one person. There's a great team, and I am proud of our association with the city. I wanted to thank you so much. You might have asked the people up there. Yeah, if you're on the board or you support Nash Community College, stand up.
I'm going to call our city management. At this time, we would ask Division Chief Mike Root to come forward along with Chief Mercer, please, for a presentation. As he comes forward, Division Chief Root began his career in the fire service for the city of Rocky Mount in November of 1996. Over the past 23 years, he has risen through the ranks as a fire engineer in 2001, a fire captain in 2003, a battalion chief in 2012, and most recently was appointed as interim division chief of operations in July of this year. Chief Root holds a bachelor's degree from East Carolina University as well as an associate's degree from Wilson Community College in fire protection technology. He is also a 2016 graduate of the Senior Fire Officer Institute. One of his most notable accomplishments during his career with Rocky Mount Fire is he is the co-founder and current administrator of the department's benevolent fund. Chief Root has been married to his wife Amy for 26 years, and they have two sons. The oldest son, Chase, is a firefighter with Northern Wake Fire Department. The youngest son, Landon, just began his junior year at UNCW. Tonight, we are here to recognize Chief Root's latest accomplishment of completing the Executive Fire Officer Program. The Executive Fire Officer Program is a joint initiative of the U.S. Fire Administration and the National Fire Academy to provide senior fire officers with enhanced professional development through a unique series of four graduate-level courses. Each course consists of a two-week class at the National Fire Academy, followed by an applied research project that relates to their organization after each course. Over the course of four years, senior officers become equipped with skills in personal and organizational leadership, community risk reduction, and emergency services operations. During the 31 years of the program's existence, only 4,100 fire officers worldwide have completed the program, and only 170 of those have been from North Carolina. We are pleased tonight to say Chief Root has become the 12th member of the Rocky Mount Fire Department to complete the rigorous four years of study and research projects required to be a graduate of the Executive Fire Officer Program. Congratulations, Chief Root.
Yeah, we want to congratulate him. That's a lot of commitment, and we're proud of him and we're proud of Rocky Mount Fire Department.
I have something special. I couldn't have done it without all the guys that are back there, Chief Root. Do we have time to just take a quick picture with them? Can you guys come down? We couldn't have done it without, Chief Mercer is also an EFO graduate, and he was recognized in Elizabeth City. So it's pretty, pretty special that he was recognized for it as well. I do, I do, if we can. Chief Summerlin's in his third year of the EFO program. And Chief Moore starting his in November. So you can see the focus on the organization and the vision. Sorry, I'm taking up the time to ask you this. Thank you.
Now, I'd like to call Angela Ramsay with Edna Insurance Company.
As Angela comes forward, mayor, members of council, and public, Edna is the city's insurance provider we switched over last year. And I'm very pleased to invite Angela down to present to the city of Rocky Mount a nice-sized check in support of a program, an initiative that was started last year called HERO Program. And this is a program that the city is in partnership with Boys and Girls Club to assist our young people at Willford Elementary School. This is the second year that the council has so graciously funded the program in the tune of $75,000 last year as well as this year. But the check, once we cash it, will certainly help us support this program, this initiative, again, this year. And we're very, very thankful for Edna for being not only the city's health care provider, but also a community partner. So with that, Angela, if there's anything you have any?
Just a few. I wanted to first and foremost say thank you to you, Manager Spontoni, and to the mayor and to the city council for supporting this effort and awesome. To Mr. Green, I've had the opportunity to visit the site. I've seen the children. This is their first day of school, so, you know, they were really excited about completing school. But most importantly, they were excited about the afternoon that they were going to spend with the HERO program. So Edna not only supports the city of Rocky Mount and your benefit plans, but we also support this community. And it does my heart good to see children who love to learn and love to be supported. And we will do all that we can to continue that effort. So thank you. Oh, and did I say the amount? I didn't. So the amount is $50,000, so this will...
Thank you. That's great news. The city of Rocky Mount is certainly appreciated, not only for support with our employees, but also for generosity. Thank you so much. This time, we're going to move on to our petition to be received from the public. I remember I haven't been here before, but I will read the statement just so you'll know if you haven't been here. It's an opportunity for the public comment. Thank you for coming to the city council to share your views. We value your input. If you'd like to address the council, you needed to sign one of these, and so we would know to ask you to come forward. Any comments should be directed to the council as a whole and not to individual council members or city staff. It is your opportunity to raise a question or present a request to the council. However, in most cases, council members will not respond to public comments, but may refer the matter to the city manager or staff for follow-up. We ask that you speak from the podium in a civil, non-argumentative, and respectful manner. Personal attack, which have the potential to disrupt the meeting, will not be tolerated, and you'll be asked to sit down and be removed from the meeting. Time will be monitored, and order to give everyone an opportunity to speak. You have three minutes, and I'll give you a heads-up in about two and a half minutes. If you are speaking for a group, then I'd ask one person to designate for that group to make comments. At this time, I'd ask, and we're going to call them in order where we receive them, Thomas Walker. Rather than Thomas Walker, I'm sorry.
Mr. Mayor and council, I simply wanted to stand here today and thank you for the documentary that has been developed on a very important form of history in this city. It was, need to say, a very difficult moment for all of us who had babbled, received business. Evans, today, could she raise her hand again? We thank God for her, that was such a praying and beautiful spirit through the whole episode, and all of the members of the sanitation department who are here. Are you, you have members here today? We really thank them. That was one of our key persons there that was involved. I might just say prophetetically, I might try and start him, but he did lose his job during that time, and I hope the city will look retrospectively as long as it's been to see if all the justice has been done for him, because if it was right today, it was right then. But I just went to that in passing. Thank you so very much for the work that this city is doing, its entire council, our mayor. And I'm very happy to be a member and a part of Rocky Mount community.
Thank you, sir. Jeanette Thomas-Coll, then after that, Diane McNulty.
Good afternoon, city council. I will preface this again. I only speak to little kids, second and third grade, so forgive me if I'm not the best. And drop my first broom. Good evening again. I'm Jeanette Thomas-Coll, 1828, Augustus Drive, Rocky Mount, North Carolina. Also famous for a mountain that has no name. And it's a joke. Some of you up there know the joke. I'm holding this up, and all of you know what this is. Many of you remember this being waved around. Well, we're waving it, we're not waving it around now. We need to be waving this constitution, and those who believe in the Bible, we need to be waving it around. And I'm saying this because, and also I want to mention, family values. Some of you do have a memory in there. Family values and this constitution waved around. Well, all of that means something, and should mean something to you. But sometimes I begin to wonder. I appear before the Rocky Mount City Council on behalf of the following late matriarchs of my family. My mom, Clara Elizabeth Thomas, who became mentally ill after birthing me and was unable to care for me. True story. So my dad called my grandma, Grandma Molly. Grandma Molly came to the rescue. I have more that I could say. And also grandmother Hester, who died before I could meet her. Please let me finish this. And the late Margaret, my stepmother, Margaret Thomas, who always reminded my dad in the summertime, in August, when it's time for me to go to school, she would say, "Jim, it's time for Jeanette to go back to college." Now, that was my stepmother. Now that was my stepmother. So I come from strong black women. My stepmother was a Philadelphia Democrat, and my dad held some sort of position related to the Democratic Party. But I'm positive my other, my grandma Molly and Hester may not have voted. And I'm sure about my mom Claire because she was mentally ill. But I do want to say that the ones who did not vote...
You've only got about thirty seconds.
I'm absolutely positive didn't entirely because of societal constraints and limitations. And they rarely verbalize opinions about being a black woman in America. So here I stand at seventy-plus year old to let you know how I feel. I do plan to vote, and thank you for your time.
Thank you, ma'am. Diane. After her is Randy Adcock.
Okay, I live in...
Diane, state your name.
Oh, my name is Diane McNulty. It's not a common North Carolinian name, obviously. I live in the Westbury District, Morning Glory Way. And I moved there about two years ago from Smithfield area. One thing I noticed within six months was people not reading speed signs. And supposedly it's twenty-five. And I talked to some of my neighbors, and they agreed that, and some had called the city with nothing really being done. They put out a flashing thing at the time, but it unfortunately continues. And it's not the question of, is there going to be anybody hit by a car? It's just simply, well, it is going to happen. Now, a lot of pedestrians are traveling from age two to eighty-two. One, sometimes two pets. So I had put on there as opposed solutions was definitely opposed to second speed sign since I was not seeing it. Some people are seeing it, but like half or not, so it's like fifty-fifty. I proposed that we need a pedestrian sign too. So people are like, oh yeah, people walk here. And thirdly, speed bumps. My one neighbor said that the city had said, you know, can't do speed bumps. Please consider that at the very minimum, the rumble strips, so that people are aware that this is a residential area and we don't want fatalities or injuries. And we had one other concern, and I'll try to squeeze this in. North Carolina Department of Transportation is going to do some construction on Old Carriage and Sunset. We're concerned because they may be diverted onto our road. And again, we're residential. We already have a speed problem. And we want them to look into it or... I'd like to find out more about that, if anyone's...
We'll get this staff and somebody take a look at it. Thank you. Randy Adcock, and then after that, Lori Dinkins.
Good afternoon, mayor, council members. I'm Randy Adcock. I'll be brief. I've never met Rich Warson personally, but I've sat in his county chamber many nights and seen him and his department receive multiple accolades. He was a dedicated employee in this city for many, many years. And I think it's a travesty what has happened since he came forward and he mentioned the studies regarding the waste of water in the city water situation. I think, like most citizens, I was relieved by Mr. Bent's presentation. And I thank him and his department for clarifying some things I think need to be done. But you know, I've listened to people standing in this room and run Rich Warson through the ground. I've read posts on social media where they've signed a man and run him underground. Had Rich not did what he did, we might not have had the presentation today. So whether there's sixty-three million dollars in unmet needs, or whether there's ten million dollars in unmet needs, or whether there's three million dollars in unmet needs, I think Rich's point was not that our water quality was in danger. I don't think he ever intended to suggest that our water quality was in danger. In fact, I think it was council member Miller that suggested. His concern was that if there is problems in our water and sewer infrastructure, then surely they need to be addressed. And I think he was right for bringing it to attention. And I think the city council and the water department and Mr. Bent particularly is right to address those concerns and move forward. Thank you.
Happy morning. It is Nehemiah Smith.
I'm Laura Vengas. Can you get me that?
Yeah.
Okay, good. I live at twenty-two twenty Northwest Leon Boulevard. We're sort of down from Don Bullock Chevrolet. I just want to know, and maybe the water man can tell me, why is my water a little bit on the yellow side? But that's not my big thing. My big thing is, I have said this a couple of times before, there is a place, and it used to be called Ebony and Ivory on North Church Street, kind of across from the old Maria Red Place. That place is going downhill every week. And I have to pass by it all the time. And once upon a time, my family owned a little parcel of land downtown. And the city always sent us a nasty letter saying, you better cut your grass or we're going to go down there and do it, and it's really going to cost you. So of course, we ran down there because we're kind of cheap. But we got it cut. Why hadn't somebody said something, whoever owns that dilapidated building? It looks absolutely horrible. And if we want to show a good representation of our city coming from ninety-five or so, if they happen to get on that highway, they're going to think we're a bunch of chummy people who don't care. I would just like somebody to check into that. I have called, I looked on the internet to see if I could call them and say, what do you plan to do with this dump? And nobody answered. So I guess the thunder's off the hook. And again, please do not litter. Because when the state cuts the grass, it cuts all that stuff. And that's three times what I have to pick up. Thank you.
Just so you know, we had a presentation earlier today, and I committed a hold meeting, and it was exactly about what you just discussed, some of the buildings. And that was one of the pictures that we actually looked at about demolishing or making our commercial property regulations a little stiffer so that we could enforce them.
Thank you, Sim.
After Nehemiah, it's Ryan Stalters.
Good afternoon. To the head council, city manager. First and foremost, I want to say thank you to Mr. Bent for his most responsible report on our water. He is a water man, and an irresponsible statement was made by a gas and electric man. So I'm glad that somebody that has expertise in that field can make a presentation. I'd rather hear about water from a water man than a gas owner. As the de facto president of the pothole patrol, I wanted to make sure that I was still on my job. We have had people who are members of the pothole patrol to call me and let me know of three most egregious points or potholes in City Independence Road near End Joy. I have pictures of these. Curtis Jones had a problem with River Drive. There was a grate that was off of the, off of the water, I guess, off of the drain. And it's still off. He messed up the rim of his car there. And then at Virginia, in the sixteen-hundred block of Virginia Street, where I live in Barnes, there is a major pothole there that is getting worse because of the number, the amount of traffic that comes that way. And they fill the hole with dirt, I guess, but it's just not sufficient. And then, of course, the four-hundred block of Hammond Street, there is a major pothole there. So we want to make sure that we look after those. They can be dangerous. They're there for cars, but they can also be dangerous for pedestrians, especially children that come in those areas that are curious and may want to mess with those things. So let's look into that. If you want to text us your concern to the pothole patrol, please text us at nine-one-zero-four-nine-three-three-eight-two-six. That's nine-one-zero-four-nine-three-three-eight-two-six. You can send pictures. Also, we have some pictures that we will provide to city staff concerning those potholes. And we thank you, we continue to thank you, mayor and council, for the great work that you continue to do in our city. I was going to come up with a sermon today, but it's not apropos. And they wouldn't allow me to bring my grandstand through security. It was too cumbersome. So have a great week and confidence.
Thank you. Did y'all get those addresses? Okay, all right. We'll check on those addresses. After Mr. Stalters is Elaine Williams.
Good afternoon, mayor, city council. Up here in regards to Mr. Bent's department, and I think we have great staff up there. I don't think anybody's questioning the staff and what they do. I think the issue is this council approved a hundred-and-eighty-thousand-dollar study by Jacobs Engineering. It was supposed to be completed in December of twenty-eighteen. I don't believe the city council has seen that. Public certainly has not seen it. Back in, I sent an email in December of twenty-eighteen, and the response I received was that we should have something in the second quarter of twenty-nineteen. Well, we're in the third quarter of twenty-nineteen. And I don't know if y'all still have seen it. I know I have not. And it was inferred that maybe the study is complete in Mr. Bent's presentation. I don't know if that's true or not, but we need to see that. You need to see that because you've got to make decisions on what to do with this city. I love the opinion that once this report is made, that we're going to have expenses that make the event center pale in comparison. And you're making decisions on parking decks, hotels, and so forth that are expensive. And first and foremost, I thank the city council. One of the things that you need to do is fund our infrastructure needs, which also includes the streets that were alluded to earlier. So I really think that we, someone on this council needs to ask where that study is. We need to see that. Within what I was in the email or with what's going on and with what Mr. Boone did, a presentation he gave to the council and committed a hold many months ago, seventy percent of our assets in the wastewater treatment plant and the Sunset Avenue Plant exceed twenty years, or forty percent of the water and sewer mains exceed fifty years. So I think the issue is, you know, and I think we're treating wastewater that we're not being paid for. The city's not receiving revenue for the water, wastewater that we're treating. And that's a serious issue. So I stress to this council that you get the Jacobs Engineering study. I don't think anybody questions the capability of our staff. They need to have the equipment to work with. And so I implore you to make public this presentation and actually have Jacobs come and present to you and the public. Thank you.
Mayor, I would like to go on the record formally requesting that the actual study be released to the public and to this council, not an edited version, not a synopsis of it, but the actual study. Thank you. I need a second to that.
And mayor, I'd like to go on the record. Wayne Richard. Was that a motion?
Yes. I move that the actual Jacobs study be released to this council and to the public, not an edited version of it, not a synopsis of it. And I would appreciate the second to that motion. Thank you.
Second motion. Have a motion second, any other discussion? I'd like to hear from the manager about the status of it.
I'm not quite sure whether or not the study has been completed, but we certainly will find out. I would also recall that during the time that information was presented to the council, there was also a direction that came from this council about how that study would be improved, the recommendations would be improved. And so it was determined at that time that the council was not interested in increasing utility rates to support the debt on those improvements, but to continue in the same financial way that we have always addressed, infrastructure improvements. And so that is the direction that was given to the staff. And that is why the planning for those improvements, as Mr. Bent illustrated, have been a part of the CIP. So it's also about not only costs, but it's how you're going to pay for it. So I will certainly see to it that the information that we have is shared with the council. And we just await council's direction.
There's a motion and a second on the floor.
But there's discussion. So does anybody else have any discussion?
I'd just like to, I'd like to make a comment and appreciate the manager's comments. As I, we spent a couple of days at the wastewater treatment plant and the water treatment plant. And they were great, great opportunities to see those facilities and hear from people. And I really appreciate the manager creating the opportunities to see those. What I recall from those meetings was we were going to need to spend money going forward, as you would naturally think we would. Some of it might be somewhat significant, but that there was going to be ongoing consideration of how to do that and fund it. And those recommendations would come forth as you developed those.
Yes, and they came forward in the form of the CIP. So that's how we were able to communicate to the council as to what those needs are and then how it would fit into a financial plan for the city without the benefit of increasing utility rates.
Right, I understand that, but there were also unmet needs beyond the five-year of CIP. And I think that's maybe what I was more specifically thinking about, that there might be significant items out there. We're quite sure how they were going to be funded and that you all were going to continue to analyze...
Yes, sir.
...cost of service and the funding opportunities or funding avenues that meet with those needs.
That's right, because it shifts from here to here. And it's really based on conditions and, you know, the needs of the system at the time.
All right, we have, any other discussion? If not...
Yes. From the city manager, Mr. Bent, that we are still in good standing with our water and those requirements that is needed for the upgrades.
I have a comment. And I think that Mr. Rich Warson was alluding to that our water would be like Flint, Michigan, and it has just been proven that that is not true. We have had a long history of unmet needs in certain parts of our city, inner city and east part of Rocky Mount, which is the edge of our side. And all of a sudden now, we're not meeting some of the needs that you all had just brought forth. But I'd just like to put on the record that it was a study done in the electric department and Rich's War singer department. And it was stated that it had been some conflict of interest, kickbacks, and favors done. And when the auditor, our former auditor, Darlena Moore, asked for the report, he refused to give her the report. He refused to give it to Charles Penning. So in light of what Ms. Chris Miller just stated in a motion that she would like to see the report, I would like to make a motion to see the report coming from Rich War singer department that has not, and I have requested it over and over and over again, but it was withheld by Mr. Rich War singer from the study of that department. So we're going to scrutinize other departments. We need to scrutinize and sanitize that department. And that's my motion I would like to say. And that's my motion I would like to say.
Excuse me, there is a motion and second on the floor.
So I got, well, thank you. My, my comment is this, um, you know, if we're paid for a study, um, I think it's more than reasonable that we need to see the study. Uh, the problem that I have, I have no problem reading the study and having conversation about actions that were recommended from that. Um, I did hear the city manager saying that, uh, you took another route, because all of us adamantly insisted that we did not want rate increases, so you took another route. Um, however, the objection I have is not for the study. I plan to vote for the release of the study as well as make a motion for the release of the other study that Mr. Knight referenced. My problem is the politicizing of need that our community has. Um, that was a political stunt. That's what it was. It was not calling attention to a problem, it was a stunt. And that's what I have objection to. Uh, so I'm ready to vote, I have no problem supporting it, I'd like to see it all.
I have a motion second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Alright, and then Mr. Knight, you want to make a motion?
Um, I'd like to ask our manager, are you aware of this study?
I'm not aware of the study. I haven't actually seen that particular study, but I have heard people speak of the study.
And since the auditor here admitted they can help find that study, but, um, again, I would like to make a motion that we, the council, see that study, that report that was done under the leadership of Rich War singer department, that, that same report he shared with us simultaneously as reported, that Chris Miller just recommended that we see as well.
And we have a second.
Second.
Alright, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no? Both of us are approved. We're gonna move on now to item number?
He just need to take a shower.
I am, Elaine B. Williams, candidate for Rock Mountain City Council Board four. Um, good afternoon to all. Um, I would like to thank our city manager for having that report done, and thank you, Mr. Bennett, for doing such an awesome job at explaining it. I also would like to invite our residents to come to our Rocky Mountain Planning Board meeting that we have monthly. Our next meeting is September the tenth at five thirty. I've been part of the planning board now for ten years, and we don't see the residents in the planning board meeting. We need to see you all there. It's a monthly meeting, and we want your input, just like you have your input at the city council. So we will greatly appreciate your input, because that's where it all starts, in the planning board. We start all of that right there. So that's when your input is really would be greatly appreciated. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Uh, Dante, is it Colville?
Okay.
Um, and again, after that, Samuel Bass.
They all doing his eating. Well, um, I'm coming over here speaking on my behalf, man, on my family, on staying in a house supposed to stay condemned, and like right now, we struggling, like paying for hotel, the hotel he and Bella, and I just had a newborn son the last month. You know, and I can't work, I'm, I'm disabled, I'm, I'm on disability. I had to thank God I would start getting to receiving that, but paying for a hotel room for three hundred something dollars, it's like, it ain't paying for much. And we just trying to conceive for help for my family in need, you know, trying to be there for them. And, um, the house, the landlord was cease of care. On the city peoples can't expect the house and everything, he said the house supposed to stay condemned anyway, cause they had a lot of mold in the house, cause they didn't need around newborns, like little kids. And it sparked fire through the wall, thank God I didn't catch the home fire, you know? And we called, peoples called, peoples called, peoples to come and fix, and see what they can do about the situation. They didn't ever do that. And I was just trying to conceive help for my family, so.
So, what's your address again, sir?
I've got it.
You've got it.
Sorry, you gonna refer to.
He's asked for help, are we gonna refer that to someone to assist him?
Well, you got two addresses, you said, two thirty one city.
Yeah, that's why I said, but, uh, my, um, my family stayed on three fifteen seven hours.
Okay.
Those are half a park.
Okay, okay, alright, thank you, sir.
Yes, sir. And they trying to conceive for help down there, cause we like, at home, maybe anyway, home.
Alright, thank you.
Alright, he, that, it's, it's what we trying to.
Alright, just give it to the chairman lady right here. Mr. Bass?
Wait, wait a minute, give a minute, we referred everybody else for help, are we sending somebody? So you gonna handle, or the clerk's office gonna handle?
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Bass. Everybody's got a question, then we get that, can we? Alright, um, Samuel, come on there.
Thank you, Mr. Bass.
Good evening. Brother needs some help, I need, need, need to know he's a P D to help this brother right here. Yes. I'm one, uh, Lord's gone, but, um, all this ki- killing that's going on in Rocky Mountain, I see everybody coming up here talking about water, talking about this and that, but nobody ain't addressing these murders going on in the city. That's the problem. How you gonna get stuff coming here, and then you get, you can't address these murders? But Raleigh's off the chain over there. I don't see no city council, nobody going over there trying to put nothing together to steal, but y'all can bring these million dollar business here to Rocky Mountain. Then you talking about redlining. How come it's redlining in the city? Only eight hundred cars come through the city of Rocky Mountain a day. You got eighteen thousand come over here, down here, sister for a back end, man. Why the motel can't go down there? Number, the number three issue. OIC. My people ready to leave there. They need their referrals, and they can't get referrals to leave there. Y'all need to make, they can't find the medical records of none of that.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
This is not OIC board meeting, and I hope you will rule him out of order at this very time.
Then Mr. Bass will either address the council.
I, I got you, I got you, I got you. It's nice. But, um, but the, the thing is, is there. We don't even have councils standing at the house. They're supposed to be standing there.
I'd like to rule him out of order?
Yeah.
At this time, if not, I'm gonna call upon order with this time.
Well, I'm just gonna ask Mr. Bass again, we, we ask you to address, you know, you, what you said.
I, I got you, I got you, it's no problem. It's no problem like that again. But number two, I mean, number three, these murk, these, these murders in this city, it ain't out of order for that. Y'all out of order. You need to address these murders. This cur, this curfew that y'all not enforcing, you need to address it. People are losing their kids and everything in this city, and you sitting around here playing chess, cause this is chess going on in this city. Now, y'all only giving support to the people that's gonna support you back. See, I'm not gonna be bought by nobody. You know, Mr. Bass, I need to talk to you later.
Y'all need to talk to me, y'all need to talk to me.
Huh?
Y'all need to talk to me.
Okay. Alright.
And don't even try it.
Alright, uh, we're, uh, part of the, uh, this is part of the meeting.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Uh, every council meeting, you read your statement.
Yes.
And if we have citizens that constantly come here and go against what you just read, then you need to enforce the policy that the city council had empowered you to enforce. It has gone on too many times, it's not just, it's whoever it is, it needs to be enforced.
I, I would, you know, I'm trying to give everybody plenty of leeway here to address issues that sometimes are not pertinent to what I need. And sometimes I would tell you the same thing happens with the city council, that people make remarks that are addressed at certain people. So again, I, I said this before, it needs to go both ways, and I'm gonna say it again. So we have tried to give people plenty of leeway to, um, express themselves, and again, we limited it to three minutes, and, uh, we're gonna move on at this point in time. Uh, item number nine is a public hearing. Uh, Norris, thank you for being patient, relative to the economic development inducement agreement for the Sierra State Wave project. Uh, and the project is called Tire Identity and Nash County for the provision of inducements for the project. Recommended actions for the receipt, public comment, consideration of the inducement agreement, and three, authorize the mayor and city clerk finance director to accept, uh, execute the agreement on behalf of the city. So this time I'm on, it is a public hearing, but we gotta have a presentation first.
Mr. Mayor, uh, members of the council, thank you for a couple of minutes to just talk about a great project that we are working on for the city of Rocky Mountain. This is a project called Project Tire. It's, uh, ninety-six new jobs. The average salary is on each job of fifty-two thousand, two hundred and ninety-two dollars per job, plus the benefits. The investment is about, about four point seven million dollars, we think it'll be closer to five million. This company, when they locate here, will create about thirty jobs a year for three years. Uh, they are purchasing an existing building, the old MBM building, uh, down in thirty fifty-one North Church Street. This is a, a very large U.S. company, they have thirteen locations across the United States. They are involved in frozen food distribution and transportation, and they are looking forward to building Rocky Mountain with their business. Uh, the inducement agreement that has been presented to, has been presented to you and your committee of the whole will induce them to come to Rocky Mountain and create these jobs. Uh, if you approve the, the inducement agreement, the state of North Carolina and city, and Nash County is prepared to also provide some inducement, as is Carolina Gateway Partnership, to encourage these people to move to Rocky Mountain with their business. Once the, uh, project is approved by you, and in this session, the state of North Carolina will move to approve a grant to the project, and the governor is prepared to announce this project early next week. Mr. Mayor?
Anybody have questions for Mr. Thompson? No, thank you, and again, I entertain a motion.
The motion.
Okay, I'm sorry, yeah, thank you for reminding. It is a public hearing, does anyone remember the public wish to speak on this item? If not, the public hearing is closed, and now I would, um.
The motion.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no? Uh, item nine is approved. Item ten is a consideration of requests from Inglewood Baptist Church to conduct the fireworks display. Uh, this is on September the eighth, uh, bedtime is at approximately nine o'clock. Recommended actions to approve fireworks request.
Some move.
Sir. Motion by council member Miller, second by council member Joyner, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no? Uh, item ten is approved. Item eleven is the notification to council in attempt to apply, this is for the, uh, JAG grant for the purchase of equipment, um, and note if awarded, the city shares the use to purchase live scan fingerprinting machine. Um, recommended access to acknowledge the notification of the tent to apply for and planned use of the JAG funds.
Some move.
Motion by council member Miller, second by council member Joyner, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no? Um, item eleven is approved. Item twelve is a consideration, consideration of a petition for annexation. This is at, uh, twenty fourteen Old Hill Road. The recommended actions to acknowledge the receipt of the petition and adopt a resolution ordering the city to, uh, investigate sufficiency of the petition.
Some move.
Motion by council member Miller, second by council member Joyner, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no? I wanted to amend, um, item number eleven, in that the recommended actions to acknowledge the notification to apply for and planned use of the JAG funds, and allow the mayor to sign the certification assurances. Can I get a motion?
Move. Yes.
Alright, motion and second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no? Alright, we amended, uh, item eleven. Item thirteen is a consideration of the following parks and recreation grant applications. Uh, A is a North Carolina Grassroots Arts Sub Grant. Uh, it's for Edgewood County, uh, for art at the Holly Street Project, uh, Holly Street Park. Uh, B, North Carolina Grassroots Arts Sub Grant, Nash County for downtown live at the Imperial Center. The recommended actions to approve the grant applications and approve the local matches and authorize submission of the application by staff. And two, authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute the required documentations and certifications, including subsequent grant agreements.
Some move.
Second. Uh, motion by council member Miller, second by council member Blackwell, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no? Item thirteen is approved. Item fourteen is a consideration of, one, memorandum of understanding between the national Rocky Mountain Public Schools and the city of Rocky Mountain, this is the provision of six school resource officers. And two, a memorandum of understanding between Rocky Mountain Prepory School and the city of Rocky Mountain for the provision of one school resource officer. Uh, recommended actions to prove the memorandum of understanding and authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute the same on behalf of the city.
The motion. Second.
Motion by council member Knight, second by council member Blackwell. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no? Item fourteen is approved. Item fifteen is a consideration of a resolution approving amendments to, uh, policy number, uh, or the policy alarm ordinance violation fees. It updates the language to correspond with the changes to the alarm ordinance amended on June tenth. Uh, recommended access to adopt the resolution approving the amendment policy.
Very much so. Some move.
Second. Motion by council member Blackwell, second by, uh, council member Joyner, any discussion?
I did have a call this afternoon, a citizen who was concerned about a fifty dollar charge or something that they might be working with their alarm company to resolve. So I wanted to clarify how many such false alarms, uh, can a business or residents have before this gets in?
According to the information that has been, um, provided, it appears that it's the fourth.
Oh, thank you. And I, that had been my revelation, that it was not on the first or second one that, that it was.
If, if you had registered, if, if you had registered your alarm system, it would be the fourth. If you haven't registered, then.
And if anyone who has an alarm system, do they automatically receive that notice from the, the commercial provider of the alarm service? Do they have to register it, or how does that happen?
I can only speak from personal experience. Um, I didn't receive any notice at all, I had to find out the hard way. And, and, um, it, it is a bit of a challenge to, um, speak with at least the alarm system that we have. Um, so I, I can understand the, the challenge that some people are having out there. You know, I don't know whether we register through the police department, or if the assumption is made, once you turn the system on, that the alarm company would register, you know, the system on behalf of the, the owner.
Well, can staff research that and maybe publicize it through social media as soon as possible?
Yes, ma'am.
I remember several years ago, a business owner along three oh one that come in about that. Apparently the wind was jostling his door, and he setting his off, and he kept getting a charge for that. Right.
Anything else coming for the council? Um, I think we have to go back into a meeting, a whole meeting that was, uh. We have to fit us on roads somewhere. Um, sixteen is consideration of following transit grants. Uh, there's A, D, and, uh, A and D there, both of them have to do with the, uh, NC Department of Transportation. And the other one has to do with our community transportation grant. The recommended actions to approve the grant agreements and authorize the mayor and city clerk execute the agreements and all required documentation.
The motion. Second.
Motion by council member Joyner, uh, second by council member Rogers. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, no. Item sixteen is approved. Item seventeen is, one, a bid for a sodium hypochlorite conversion project at the Tarver Reservoir Treatment Plant and Wastewater Treatment Plant. This is an award that U V S Construction Company in the amount of a billion, seven hundred and ninety-six thousand. Two, a budget ordinance to then appropriate nine hundred and ninety-seven thousand in water fund and seven hundred and ninety-nine in sewer fund to cover the project expenses. Recommended actions to award the bid is recommended, authorize the mayor to execute the agreement on behalf of the city, and two, adopt the budget ordinance.
Some move.
Motion by Councilmember Blackwell, seconded by Councilmember Knight. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, no. Item seventeen is approved. Item eighteen is a consideration of release of natural gas utility easement. This is for commercial development, the one they needed to serve Tarrytown Mall. It's been gone a long time. Recommended actions to approve, approve the release of the easement, authorize the mayor to execute the same on behalf of the city.
So move.
Motion by Councilmember Joyner, seconded by Councilmember Fuller. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Item nineteen, consideration of bids. One is a natural gas system, it's a labor contract. Two, item B is a screw pump replacement at our Harley ninety-seven lift station. And C, the fire station uniforms, awarding to American uniforms. The recommended actions to award the bids is recommended, authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute the bid contracts for both B and on behalf of the city, A and B. And three, authorize the purchasing division to issue purchase order and execute a bid document for city in accordance with the council's award. Motion by Councilmember Knight, seconded by Councilmember Joyner. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, no. I don't think there's another page here, so I hope they are done now, so... Mr. Mayor, I think we got to go back to number fifteen. We got to, we didn't vote on that. We had conversation, the motion and the second was late, I believe. We had conversation, I think we... Yeah, we are going to go back into a... So we're going back into a committee, a whole meeting that we adjourned, or we recessed, and we're going to go back into that now. Thank you all for being here. The city council meeting is over.